Alderman Kierkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenia.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Kuzikowski.
Here.
Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Ted, would you lead us?
I pledge the Stupid Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone would please take a look at the minutes of June 18th. If there's any errors, omissions, or questions, feel free to bring them up. When you're ready, we'll entertain a motion.
Kuzikowski make a motion to approve the minutes of June 18th, 2019.
Dukenia, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Upstays.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item four is the first of our, is our public hearing for a conditional use amendment for a portion of an existing building and lot to be used for contractor office, shop, and yard, limited outdoor storage at 8940 South 27th Street. Catherine.
Public hearing number one is to consider requests submitted by RD Invest, Inc. for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow a portion of the existing building and lot to be used for contractor's office, shop, yard, with limited storage on a property at 9840 South 27th Street. Applicant is RD Invest, Inc. Property owner is RD Invest, Inc. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is June 12th, 2019.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the city, and this is a public hearing and request to amend the conditional use permit for the property at 9840 South 27th Street. Council will recall that a conditional use was approved in January of this year for the automotive and truck engine and body repair, as well as outdoor storage of vehicles for sale and semi-truck parking for this property. And during review of that initial conditional use permit, the applicant had suggested that the building was being set up in such a way that it could accommodate additional tenants. Well, that actually did happen, and subsequent to the approval of the conditional use permit, a tenant came forward that would lease a good portion, 60% of the building on site as a field operation headquarters for a telecom provider. So, the conditional use would then therefore need to be amended. It allows for the outside storage of equipment such as poles, cable spools, things that you would see generally in relationship to those types of projects that are ongoing. The community would be limited term. It does not affect the overall term of the conditional use permit. It reassigned space within the building. It also reassigned space within the parking and loading areas for each of those businesses within the building. There's actually two businesses in there. So, the approximately six to 10 employees would be on-site if given time for that. The hours of operation would be very similar to the existing approved use, which is the M&amp;M Truck Center. Again, the outdoor storage areas would be fenced in as they would have been previously as well. And the items that couldn't be stored inside, and preference would be to store things inside, obviously, but because of the, given the size and what have you, would need to be stored outside. Those might include, again, pedestals, cable spools, sand and gravel, and in your report, there's images of the types of things that might be stored outside as part of this proposed conditional use. The Plan Commission has reviewed the request for the amended conditional use permit at the meeting of June 11th. The request was recommended for approval, subject to the attached conditions and restrictions, which are also a part of your council report and packet. This being a public hearing, I would now ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed amendment to the conditional use permit for 9840 South 27th Street, please fill out an appearance form. When your name is called, please proceed to the podium and address your comments and our questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. And as Doug said, we'll make three calls. This will be the first. Second call. Third and final call for anybody wishing to speak. We'll now close the public hearing and move on to consideration of an ordinance of the conditions and restrictions we just spoke of. We'll open it up to the council for questions. Doug? I'm assuming this is all in the industrial park down there?
It is. It's, if you recall, it's the old fireplace shop.
Okay. Yeah, okay. And it looks vacant land to the south and all industrial, commercial type stuff.
It is. As you get a little bit further south, there's a business park, additional development there.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions? Chris?
I was just going to bring up that at Plan Commission, we did go through the, both times earlier this year and then today, or a couple of weeks ago, pretty rigorous Plan Commission engaged in, so everyone's comfortable with the terms and that are brought forth here today.
Anyone else? Just to add to Chris's comments, just to make you aware, these conditional use permits for the truck portion was six years and it expires in 2025. And for the outdoor storage for the telecom, it's actually a two-year and it expires July 16th of 2021, just for your information. There's no other questions? Motion.
Kuzikowski makes a motion that the common council adopt ordinance number 2941, an ordinance to amend conditions and restrictions in ordinance 2926 to allow a contractor's office, shop, yard with outdoor storage and truck parking as allowed, as allowed use as part of the existing conditional use permit for audible bill and truck engine and body repair, outdoor storage of vehicles, and outdoor display of vehicles for sale, and semi-truck trailer parking on the property at 9840 South 27th Street.
Lorick, I'll second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenia.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item number six is a presentation by our Health Department Services for an update. We have Darcy, our health officer, with us tonight.
Good evening. My name is Darcy DuBois. I'm the Community Public Health Officer, and I'm here tonight just to share some information of highlights from 2018 and service updates for 2019. In 2018, the Health Department finalized a strategic plan, a five-year strategic plan, and one of our goals was to more regularly share information with our elected officials, and this is part of that goal. You'll find in your common council packet tonight a copy of our annual report from 2018. That has more information. I'll provide some highlights of those services. The Health Department works extensively with community partners to provide events and services that meet the needs of the community. Some of those partners include the Department on Aging, the School District, our healthcare systems, police and fire, and many others. We were able to offer a wide variety of events in 2018, and I'll highlight just a few of them tonight. The Freedom on Wheels event was a partnership with Milwaukee County Transit. They actually came here to the building to provide some information about how to use the Milwaukee County bus system. We know that that's here in Oak Creek now, but we were hearing from residents, especially seniors, that while they wanted to take advantage of that, they didn't feel confident in how to read a bus route, or how to buy tickets, or even maybe how to board the bus. So they came here, they brought a bus, they went through everything, they let us ride the bus and take a little tour. It was a really nice event, and we got some really good feedback about it. That's something we'll probably look to do again, maybe targeting other groups in the community over time. We also partnered with the Health Department, or sorry, with the Fire Department and the Safe Kids Organization to do our fire prevention neighborhood sweeps. So that's something that we do annually, targeting one neighborhood in Oak Creek. And we go out and go door-to-door knocking on the door to provide fire prevention information and make sure that there's working smoke detectors. If there aren't, they're able to install those smoke detectors right away on that visit. That's something that's always very popular, and we're able to reach a lot of residents that way. And finally, we partnered with the Police Department on some of our senior safety talks, which was a new initiative in 2018. Going out to the senior living facilities to meet with groups of seniors to provide information on medication safety and other safety topics that are relevant to them. We're able to disseminate at no cost medication lock boxes to allow for safe medication storage, and the Police Department is able to collect unused and expired medications so that they don't have to take it into the Police Department. That's something that our goal is to get out to all of the senior living facilities, and we're working through that list this year as well. Substance abuse prevention is one of our current priorities in our Community Health Improvement Plan. We do have an AODA task force that guides the substance abuse prevention work that the Health Department does. And in 2018, we were able to partner with a local Boy Scout to build a mobile wake-up call room. You can see some pictures on the screen. This is a mock teen bedroom that's used to educate parents and caregivers about signs of drug use in teens. We wanted it to be mobile so that we could take it out to various events. And in 2018, we were able to have it at National Night Out and also at the high schools Back to School Night. We'll be at those events again this year, as well as a couple of other community events. We've gotten some really good feedback from residents who have been able to experience that so far. And as all of you are familiar with, we were able to partner with the Police Department and the Board of Health and the School District to work on an electronic cigarette ordinance prohibiting the use, just as we prohibit the use of regular tobacco as well. Our maternal and child health programming is some of our most highly-used programming at the Health Department. In 2018, we were able to begin offering a community breastfeeding support program. It came to our attention that there was no professionals in the Oak Creek area offering support to newly breastfeeding families. And so one of our nurses was able to obtain certification as a lactation counselor, and she's now able to offer one-on-one support to families who are experiencing challenges or have questions about breastfeeding. And so she can do that in their home, or they can come into the Health Department to access those services. And that's been very popular so far. We also started working in 2018 with the Oak Creek Childcare Centers, supporting them and becoming certified as breastfeeding-friendly. That's a voluntary designation that childcare centers can work towards. It's a 10-step process, which is pretty involved. It involves things like policies and training for staff and space in the building. But once they achieve it, families that choose those daycare centers can be confident that if they're sending their child there and the mother is breastfeeding, that they'll be supported in that endeavor. So of our 10 childcare centers, five expressed interest in becoming certified. In 2018, we were able to support two in achieving that designation, and we're hoping that two more will complete that in 2019 as well. And then finally, our Child Passenger Safety Program is one of our most popular programs. We have a certified car seat technician on our staff who's able to both check car seat installations or help families install car seats in their car. If any of you have kids or grandkids, you can, you know how hard it is to get those things in. And so they bring their car in, they bring their car seat in, and then the staff person works through them and provides education about safe car seat use. We also do have some grant funding that allows us to provide car seats at no cost to families that are in need, and that's been very popular. We've seen an increase in use in that program every year since we implemented in 2015. I did want to touch on the work that we do around communicable diseases as well, as my staff spend a significant amount of their time doing that, and I think that it has a huge benefit to the Oak Creek community. State statute requires that the Health Department investigate all suspect, probable, and confirmed cases of quite a long list of communicable diseases. So when staff receive a report of a communicable disease, they reach out to both a medical professional treating that person to make sure that we have the whole, all of the information regarding it. And then they reach out to the person affected to provide information and education, make sure they understand what's going on, make sure that they know what type of treatment they need, that they're accessing follow-up care as needed, and very importantly, make sure that they understand how to control the spread of disease. So we talk about things like, you know, good hand washing, or if they need to stay home for a certain period of time. Sometimes they need to wear a mask if they're in a public space, and we provide those to them. So really working with them through the duration of that disease to make sure that it doesn't spread and that they are, receive the treatment that they need to return to good health. As I said, my staff spend a lot of time on that, and I think it does have a positive impact. As you can see on the slide, we have seen an increase every year in the number of communicable diseases that we're investigating. That's not unique to you, Oak Creek. We see that across the state of Wisconsin for a few reasons. One, one being that I think they keep adding more diseases to that list of things that we have to investigate. So every year, we're following up on more diseases. So that's part of that. We do-
Darcy, sorry, interrupting. Are healthcare providers required to share that information with you?
Yes, they are. So if the disease is on that list of reportable diseases, they are required to share information. Here in Oak Creek and in all communities, we see that the largest number of communicable, sexually transmitted diseases comprise the largest percentage of communicable diseases. In 2018, 41% of our investigations focused on STDs, and again, that's not unique to Oak Creek. So in 2019, we are looking at implementing some new services or have already started, carrying on with that communicable disease conversation. We did, we did have the opportunity to receive some funding to implement reproductive health services, and as, as a result of seeing, taking a deeper look at those STDs, we realized that there weren't accessible reproductive health services here on the South Shore. So we know that young adults tend to be most impacted by STDs, and they also tend to be uninsured or underinsured, meaning that they might have a high deductible, or they might only have a catastrophic health insurance plan, and so they're not likely to go into a primary care provider for testing or access to birth control or something like that. So with this grant funding, we're able to implement some of those services here at the Health Department. And then with, importantly, with the goal of getting those clients enrolled into a Medicaid program called Family Planning Only Services. So with Family Planning Only Services, they're able to go into a primary care doctor, access those, that testing and treatment or birth control reproductive health services, and, and they won't, hopefully, we'll see a decrease in sexually transmitted diseases. But importantly, the Health Department is just that initial stop. So we will not be providing ongoing services. Our goal is really to get people covered by health insurance and then to help them make a connection with the primary care doctor. So it's a two-year grant. We're working this year on getting policies in place, getting staff trained, and then next year, we'll be looking at implementing services for the community. Also, in 2019, we were able to obtain a substance abuse grant, so that was in partnership with the communities of Cudahay, St. Francis, and South Milwaukee. That funding is being used to provide trauma-informed care training to all police, fire, and Health Department staff in those four communities. We know that individuals who are impacted by substance abuse often have experienced some sort of trauma in their life, and that training allows our staff to have a better understanding of how to successfully work with those individuals in the community. We're also looking at developing what we call rapid response teams, and where, when an individual experiences a non-fatal overdose, we would make contact with them soon after that incident to provide resources and information, and if they're interested, help make a connection to substance abuse treatment. So that's something that we would hope to maybe implement later this year, or possibly next year, in partnership with the Police Department and maybe some community organizations that have peer specialists. We are also working on our Community Health Assessment. So every five years, the Health Department does a comprehensive community health assessment where we gather data from a bunch of sources and importantly, survey the community around what they think are the most important public health needs. So right now, we have a survey that's available online and in paper copies that we're working to get out to as many members of the community as possible. We'll also be doing focus groups and key informant interviews, and then all that will be put together into a comprehensive written assessment, which will be shared with you. That, we hope to have that done by the end of this year, and then next year, we'll be working on our next Community Health Improvement Plan. So that's where we'll identify the three to five priorities that the Health Department wants to strongly focus on over the next five years. And finally, the Health Department this year will be providing flu shots to employees and their families again. That's something that we did in the past. The past few years, we haven't, as the city was working with an offsite clinic, but we're looking forward to returning to offer that services for city employees again this year. And the last thing I wanted to talk about was the review process that the Health Department went through earlier this year. So Wisconsin State statute requires that all local health departments be evaluated by the Department of Health Services every five years to ensure that they're meeting at least a basic level of services, providing those services to the community. So in compliance with Administrative Rule 140, we had to provide quite a bit of evidence and documentation around the services that we're providing. We then had a site visit here with the state where we talked through the programs, answered any questions they might have, and then they looked at all of that and determined that the Oak Creek Health Department is maintaining our Level 3 certification. So in Wisconsin, a health department can be certified as a Level 1, 2, or 3. The 3 is the, is the highest designation, meaning that we're offering the most comprehensive array of services. We've been a Level 3 health department for the past five years, and now we have that for an additional five years. One benefit of being a Level 3 health department is that we do have access to additional grant funding, which allows us to continue providing the services that we are providing. We do have someone here from the state tonight who's going to present that award following this presentation. And that's all I had to share. So just wondering if there's any questions or any additional information I can provide?
Alderman Rich Dukenia, third district. Darcy, first off, just want to say thank you for putting this information together and presenting it to us this evening. I know in my district, I have constituents that have called me over the course of the last two, three years, you know, what is the useful purpose? Or what is the role of the Health Department in our community? Quite honestly, I wasn't equipped or able to answer those questions as well as I should have. This information is certainly helpful. Opened my eyes up to the many things that you do that I was not aware of. So again, just a thank you for providing this information.
I'm glad to hear that. I think a lot of the work that we do is kind of under the radar of a lot of people. They don't know that it's going on unless you happen to be unfortunately, an individual who needs those services. But there is a lot going on to maintain the health of the community, and I'm happy to have an opportunity to share that.
Steve?
Alderman Kirkowski, first district. I've, I've been on the Board of Health since I got elected, and I'll be a bit absent this baseball season because it didn't rain on some, some days, which was rare. But when you, in my, me being on the Board of Health, I've had an opportunity to just see how this, this group works, and like Darcy said, there's, people just don't know what the Health Department does, but they're all, they're out there trying to promote certain community needs. And if you listen to Darcy tonight, a lot of it, a lot of it, he said grants, grants. So they're not only just a very, very minuscule amount, amount on our city budget, but they make up for that need with, with getting grants to go out and do these community events, which is really a testament to how hard they work. So I thank you for the, the work you do, and I hope your day was, was, was pretty good. We were going to meet earlier today, but there was a site issue, we couldn't. But I just want to point that out, is they work very hard, and, and I hope that you get the support from the Board of Health that you need to, I think you do, but to carry on this work. Thank you. Which, by the way, is testament to what line with item seven, agenda item seven's going to be. Thank you.
Chris?
Alderman Kuzikowski, sixth district. I thank you for all of the programming that you brought forward this year. And I want to say that I'm real happy to hear that the flu shots, whether it's the best or most economical, are coming back. I just, I think that's a good idea to have them here and be able to offer it to citizens and employees.
I guess I'll just add a couple of short comments. Health Department was instrumental with the opioid task force, countywide opioid task force. We hosted a roundtable session here last year. I was put on that task force and found out very quickly, I knew very little about the whole subject. Health Department helped educate, educate me, and more importantly, bringing forward to the community. And if you don't think there's issues throughout the county, there are. Believe it, Oak Creek ain't immune to it either. We do have our issues here. Health Department is helping educate and bring that forward with Bedroom on Wheels. It's going in there to educate the parents on what to look for, and it's invaluable. Your work with the elderly, I hear it all the time, slips and fall classes, the car seats for the young parents, so they're doing a wide spectrum for the population there. And then just a statistic on the communicable diseases, it was 360 cases last year. Almost one a day you're working at. I think she said it best, they fly under the radar and you never notice what they do until they don't do it, and then it's too late because the public interest is sacrificed. So again, on behalf of the common council and everybody up here, thank you for all your hard work, you and your staff. You are appreciated. All yours. Item seven is the presentation of the Department Level 3 Certification Award.
All right. Darcy did a great job of telling you guys what DHS Administrative Rule 140 is and what it requires of health departments. So I had the pleasure of working with Darcy and her team and the Board of Health to complete their DHS 140 review, which goes through all of the services that the Health Department provides. And as she mentioned, there are three levels of health departments in the state of Wisconsin, Level 3 being the highest level of health department. So I'm pleased to say that we did approve and designate them as continuing to be a Level 3 health department. And I wanted to add like one additional plug for Darcy and the Health Department here. The state of Wisconsin, myself, have led a revision of the DHS 140 Administrative Rule, which went into effect in July. And Darcy has been serving not only your community, but the state as well, by serving on a work group to help determine how we can actually implement those changes to what's required of the public health departments in our state. So you have a very great health officer here who is doing wonderful things. It's always great to see these summaries and to have them presented to common council because public health often goes unnoticed until you notice that something's really wrong and you need us. But she's also doing some really great work in the state too, which is very commendable. So I thank her for that and wanted to make sure she gets some acknowledgements for that. So with that, I want to present the certificate of Level 3 designation that will be good for five years to Darcy and her staff from the Health Department. So here you go. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Congratulations, Darcy, to you and your staff again. Greatly appreciated, all the work you do. Okay. Item eight is consideration of a resolution authorizing the issuance of a sale of approximately $4,110,000 worth of general obligation refunding bonds. Bridget?
Mr. Mayor, if you are okay, I would like to take eight and nine together. It's just easier to have that conversation.
Sure. That is fine.
So we are here tonight with the sale of the refunding bonds for the original IKEA infrastructure debt from 2016. So in May, we came to common council asking for the plan of finance related to this debt where we are going to break it out between what is tax exempt and what is taxable. So that's why you have the two debt issues for that 1, or $5.1 million from 2016. So we went through our typical process where we had the due diligence with Corals &amp; Brady, our bond counsel, and we also worked with Moody's to receive a bond rating. Moody's rated these issuances in AA2 and reaffirmed our AA2 for all of our existing debt. So continued positivity from Moody's on the track financially, as well as the development that's occurring in Oak Creek. So great positive conversations there. The numbers where we actually settled today due to lower interest rates are less than what you have in your council packet. So if you notice the difference, that's, that's why we passed out a handout from Justin with Baird explaining where the rates came in today. So I'm going to turn it over to Justin to fill you in on the rates.
Thanks, Bridget. And thanks, council, for having me here tonight. It's great to see everyone. So as Bridget said, there's a packet in front of you with the final results of today's bond sales. So if you look at page two of the presentation, it says issue summaries at the top. So the first one was a general obligation refunding bond. The final amount is $3,925,000 and will close August 1 of 2019. The maturities are going to range from 2024 to 2026, with the first interest payment being April 1 of 2020, and the call date on these bonds being October 1, 2026. The final interest rate is a 2.58%, so for 17-year debt, very, very low interest rates. We're, we're kind of almost approaching that historical low for interest rates. So it's a great, you know, just kind of a, I can't take credit for it, it's just, you know, sometimes you get lucky, and right now, interest rates are, are optimal for borrowing for, for communities. As, as Bridget mentioned, Moody's affirmed the city's rating at AA2. She did an excellent job on the bond rating call, kind of going through the financials and, and what's been going on in the city, and Moody saw everything that's been going on and affirmed the, the excellent bond rating. So the other bond issue was a taxable general obligation refunding bond. The final amount is $1,030,000, and this will also close August 1 of 2019 with maturities ranging from October 1, 2020 to 2024. Again, the- Again, the concept of amortizing the taxable debt first, followed by the less expensive tax exempt debt. First interest payment being April 1 of 2020. This is non-callable AA2 and the final interest rate a 2.62%. So very low interest rates and an excellent bond sale. Page 3, this just gives you an overall overview of the analysis with the left side being the revenues from TID number 12, followed by the two borrowings that took place today to get you a level combined debt service of around $380,000. The original projection was closer to about $400,000 on an annual basis. So that shows you how well this came in from an interest rate perspective.
Seeing none, we're going to do these separately. So motion on 8 and then 9, please.
Tomlin will make a, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I got the right number here, but Tomlin will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 12081, a resolution authorizing issuance and sale of approximately $3,925,000 general obligation refunding bonds. Correct?
Yep.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Christine.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Okay. Motion on 9 then.
Tomlin will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 12082, resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of approximately $1,030,000 taxable general obligation refunding bonds.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Christine.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Justin.
Item 10 is an informational in the city's mid-year 2019 budget monitoring report. Bridgette, again.
We're already halfway through the year. Here we go, as we look at our second quarter for 2019. Yes, slide transition, Doug. So the charts that we're looking at are just covering the second quarter. We are really focusing in on the general fund and some of our larger funds, looking at the revenues and expenses for solid waste, We Energies, health insurance, EMS and dispatch. As you will see throughout the presentation, we are comparing your blue column, which is your 2019 budget, to the green column, which is through the second quarter. So just high level, looking at general fund revenues compared to general fund expenditures. Our revenues are at 66% of the budget midway through the year and our expenses are at 47%. So generally, very good news at this time of the year. Delving into those general fund revenues more specifically, at this point of the year, we have received 90% of our tax revenue. So naturally, that skews your data throughout the whole process, but that is normal. This is what we are used to seeing and prepare for. We've received 22% of our other taxes, which consists of our pilot from the water utility room tax and a few smaller tax-related items, and 24% of our state shared revenues. So we receive a large chunk of our state shared revenues in July and then another in November. So that's why that is looking low and nothing of concern. Going further with our other intergovernmental revenues at 29%, license and permits off the charts, 1.81%. On January 3rd, we received our million dollar payment from Amazon for our permits. So blew the budget out of the water on day three of the calendar year. So that also plays into why our revenues are skewed in the general fund. 32% we are at for charges for services. This is, you know, where our recreation time or charges hold. We have some developer payments that come in for work on certain projects. So again, not concerned at this point with it being at 32% because we aren't recording the whole summer. That's where Rec has their highest increase in services. Public health and safety, 45%. Chamber lease, dead on at 50%. Commercial revenues is at 73%. Commercial revenues is mainly our interest income. So we are having another good year with interest income. We also have our insurance incentives, cable TV fees that go into that account. And then we budgeted for some transfers, but those normally happen at the end of the year. So it's currently at zero for the inter-fund transfers. Moving into the general fund expenditures, just looking at it more general in our categories, general government is at 47%, public safety 47. Everybody is essentially at 51 or under. So again, we're still positive. This is where we want to see our expenses, all of them throughout this process, as I'll explain. It's all something that we can point to why it's at 51% or 52% and a lot of it is just So this is your detail of department or division in the general fund, all of the expenses. If you look, I'll point out any that are over the 50% currently. Our assessor division is at 54%. That's really a matter of timing. They've done, you know, all of the board of review mailings and their big mailings are done earlier in the year. That is where I saw their budget was off. So it's a minimal movement. They'll catch up here as they get further into the year. We have the fire department and the streets division of DPW are at 51%. At this point in the year, the snow and ice portion of the streets budget is totally spent. So it'll balance out, I promise you. I feel foolish pointing out some of these items, but it's just so you understand, these are the things that we look for. We are trying to make sure that everything else is lining up correctly. Forestry Division, you know, at that point, and library, they both have a couple odd items where it looks like they may have made a contract payment earlier in the year that was the entire amount of that line item for the budget. So no concern. We really are holding very steady at this point in the year. So shifting into our other major funds and looking at their revenues, solid waste and dispatch are mainly funded by your taxes, the levy. So again, that's why you're going to see, oh, and EMS, I apologize. So that's why you are going to see those revenues higher at 90% for solid waste, 75 for EMS and 79 for dispatch. We Energies, that fund, we get a payment from We Energies on July 2nd. So that's why that revenue is showing zero at this point. Health insurance fund is mainly funded by our interdepartmental transfers. That's why we're dead on at 51% because I have my journal entries completed on time. And EMS, just another positive note, we are still seeing very good trends with increased revenue being received for the EMS fund. Switching to the expenditures, again, we really don't have anything of concern on this slide. Everybody is sitting at 51% or less. We Energies is at 66%. We have to delve a little bit deeper into how some of the payroll splits are happening. That's why this number is unusually high. So we'll be reviewing that and make any corrections as needed in the next few weeks. Looking at some of our other larger expenses with the utilities and fuel, we are still having a very good year with the low fuel costs. Our electricity is also under budget, water and natural gas. So the adjustments that we made during the 2019 budget year came to be true at this point and we will keep our fingers crossed that we'll hold the line. That's my favorite one, sorry. I'll make that go faster next time. The critical items to note is, you know, we're really, again, 90% of our largest revenue has been collected at this point in the year. We've received that very large check from Amazon for permits and our expenditures are on track. So I'll just keep, keep watching each month and each quarter and let you know if there are any concerns. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Bridgette? Hold that one, Bridgette. Just a comment, this is a real reflection on the entire city and the management. Finance adds up all the numbers, but the managers really manages stuff and bring it in. And as you can see, very responsible management going on throughout the city. So thank you to all out there. Item 11, informational, summarized treasures report on the investment in banking for the month ending May 30th, 2019. Don't see Barb with us, but go through it if we have any questions. Bridgette can take care of them, I would think. Any questions concerning the numbers you see? We'll move on to 12. 12 is consideration of a motion and concur with the mayor's appointments for the following people, Patty Henson and Courtney J. Wholehouse for celebrations. Seeing none, motion.
Bill moved to concur with the mayor's appointments as shown.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Item 13 is consideration of a motion to approve a proposed three-year agreement for the school resource officer for the 2019, 2019, 2020 school year. And this contract would expire May 31st, 2022. And we have Chief Anderson with us to explain.
Yes, thank you. This is something that we have approved annually, other than the first time a contract was signed back in 1999. That was a three-year contract as well. Couple of main differences is this contract is for three years and it also has a third SRO position in it with the school district. They already approved the agreement. The first two positions are still split at 50/50 for this agreement with the third position, the school district is paying 67% of the wages and benefits and the city's paying 33% of the wages and benefits. The overtime is still a 50% split for any school-related activities, cases, events that the SROs have to be at. Otherwise, the language is with, other than those changes, it being a three-year agreement, with them covering more for the third position.
Questions for Chief?
Just a quick one, Steve. I meant to reach out to you before this, but I didn't get a chance to. Just speaking to that 50, or excuse me, 50% recruitment of the overtime cost, that is not a new feature or that is a new feature?
That was, so it was, it's not new for this one. We added that back in last year, I believe, was the year it was added back in.
Okay. Just commend you for, you know, really achieving everything we set out to do, the council's direction in the budget this year to get that split, you know, cost share, you know, a little more, you know, a little more from the school district for that third SRO position as that was a desirable thing for them to have as well as the city. But I commend you for really achieving what we set out to early on.
Alderman Kuzakowski, Sixth District. Just a quick question, the three years, what, is that to help retain the officers or just curious what?
It's really the length of the agreement. The officers are in a, this is a special assignment, it all deals with their contract. So that has nothing to do with these years. It made it, realistically, it made it more appealing to the school at this point. We have three years where now, I did talk to them at some point, and the fourth year there may be a transition to the second or third, or the first or second position to more of the split where they would cover more. But this is, instead of coming back every year to the council for approval for this, nothing has really changed and the rest of the verbiage has been the same since 99. It just made more sense to try and do it on a, on this type of term.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, motion on 13.
Bill moved to approve the proposed three-year agreement for the school resource officer services for the start of the 2019, 2020 school year and expiring May 31st, 2022.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenia.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Item 14 is consideration of an ordinance number 2943 revising ordinance 2939 to incorporate conditions and restrictions and a general development plan for a planned unit development at 10730 South Howell Avenue. Doug?
Thanks, Mayor. At their last meeting, the council adopted an ordinance 2939 res zoning this property, 10730 South Howell Avenue, to RD1, to family residential planned unit development. As part of that ordinance, and you recall that there was some, so much unique circumstances in that it was forwarded to the council without, without a possible recommendation from the Plan Commission, but as part of the council's approval of that ordinance, they directed that the Plan Commission prepare conditions and restrictions and a general development plan for further review by the council at their next meeting, obviously tonight, for the purposes of regulating the planned unit development. The conditions and restrictions and general development plan were reviewed by the commission at their meeting of July 9th, at which time the commission recommended its approval. There were two modifications of note that I just wanted to speak very briefly to. The commission recommended that there be a minimum front setback of 14 feet to the private street and sidewalk for the home port, the portion of the home, not necessarily that the garage portion, that would still be a 20-foot setback, but the houses would be 14 feet to the sidewalk and the private street, actually the sidewalk. The second was to have the Plan Commission review the location of the proposed dog park as part of the phase two site development review. And again, each of the development phases has to come back to the Plan Commission for detailed plan review for each phase, roughly half of, half of the 85 home development. And as some of the concerns were addressed by the neighborhood, the commission and the applicant, and I'd like to express some appreciation for the fact that they're listening to the some of the concerns of the neighborhood and decided to reevaluate that as part of the second phase. So at this point in time, we'll take a little closer look at that in phase two. But with that, the commission has recommended approval of the GDP and conditions and restrictions. And the, again, moving forward, this ordinance incorporates those conditions, restrictions and that general development plan into the ordinance that you previously adopted to rezonate this property.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions? Go ahead, Ken.
Thanks, Doug. Just clarification for me, Doug. I don't do planning commissions, so the change to 14 feet is from what?
15.
And I recall reading, and maybe one of it was kind of the staff report and one was the ordinance, one area said the planning commission was to review and the one section in one piece said there was planning to approve of the dog park on the second phase.
Well, I think it's, they're defer, it's essentially deferring the decision on the dog park to the second phase as part of the, the detailed site and building plan approval. It's not eliminating it per se, it's not entitling it per se, it's just kind of deferring that action towards the second phase site approval.
Maybe there's a possibility to take it to the far south end away from the residents that reside there somewhere back along the pond or something like that. Kind of a work in progress, we're gonna work with staff and we're gonna do our best to keep everybody happy as best we can. Else?
Oh, I was gonna, that was, I was gonna mention.
Yeah, that, that was the main talk of it, so.
And in traffic.
Yeah, again, it, it'll be worked out on highway thirty-eight along, you know, with the state and how it goes. You know, Elm Road comes in there, they'll have to look at the entrances to make it safe for all the OT standards. I think in the end, we'll find something that's livable for all. Nothing else, motion.
Move to approve ordinance twenty-nine forty-three revising ordinance twenty-nine thirty-nine to incorporate conditions and restrictions and a general development plan for planned unit development at one zero seven three zero South Howell Avenue.
Gzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item fifteen is consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map for Derek Travis for the properties at thirty-nine forty-five, thirty-nine fifty-five, and thirty-nine seventy-one East Elm. Doug?
Thanks, very, very simply, this CSM takes three lots, we can figures them into two, all of which, or both of which meet the criteria for the zoning district. Plan commission has recommended its approval.
Questions?
Is there any plan moving forward on this, Doug? Was there anything stated? The purpose of combining these lots?
Just to make, make, make them two even in, make the lots even so there's, there's, we end up in with two one-hundred-foot lots where there was some smaller lot, there were some smaller lots. So it's really, I'm not sure that there's a timeline or, or what have you as far as what happens with those lots. But it was really just to make them, I won't speak with the applicant, but it was just to, we can figure them into a, a more saleable condition.
And just of note, I think there was a shed on there that crossed the line, that they were gonna demolish or move one of the two. So again, I think it was just for the owners' sake to combine them lots. I think, I think the third lot fell right between them.
Way of less sure.
So.
And then you have a driveway, so.
No other questions, motion on fifteen, please.
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt resolution number one-two-zero-eight-three approving a certified survey map submitted by Derek Travis for the properties at thirty-nine forty-five, thirty-nine fifty-five, and thirty-nine seventy-one East Elm Road.
Gzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Item sixteen is inspection and it's consideration of an ordinance number twenty-nine forty-two recreating section fifteen point thirty-nine, the state code adoption and repealing and recreating sections fifteen forty through fifteen fifty-seven of chapter fifteen of the Oak Creek Municipal Code relating to the electrical code. Mike, you got this one?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So currently, our inspection staff conducts all the permitting and inspecting and all the inspections for the electrical work that, that happens in the city. And this includes residential and, and, uh, commercial, industrial applications. And Department of Safety and Professional Services has recognized a, a need to get a uniformity of the, of the requirements of the codes. And most communities of, of Oak Creek size do conduct their own permitting and inspecting. And the, the DSPS has decided, let's, let's get this uniform. If you are to continue to do these inspections, then you, and to keep your credential with the state, then you need to adopt the state electrical code. And so DSPS is going through these communities through their electrical codes and ordinances and seeing where there are inconsistencies and actually going through those documents and, and giving the suggested revisions. And so basically, that's what you, what you see before you hear is their suggested changes, the inconsistencies that they saw that need to be addressed. So our real inspection supervisor and, and our electrical inspector sat down and, and put that document together.
Thank you, Mike. Questions? Basically, the state sets the code, we can enhance it, but again, we have to be at their minimum and we can't be in conflict with them. I guess that's the gist of it, so.
Yeah. I was looking at it originally, I'm like, holy cats, what's going on here? But that makes sense right there, you nailed it, so thank you.
So if there's no further questions, motion, keep inspections in business.
Move to approve ordinance twenty-nine forty-two creating section fifteen point three-nine state code adoption and repealing and recreating sections fifteen point four zero through fifteen point five seven of chapter fifteen of the Oak Creek Municipal Code relating to the electrical code.
Gzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item seventeen is a resolution considering vacating thirty feet of water main easement by and between Oak Creek Franklin School District and the city of Oak Creek. Mike, you covering water tonight in the sewer?
I can, I get to crack at it, I wasn't really involved with this too much, but I read through the council reports and, uh, and so basically the.
I don't see a water guy out there.
There's a, there's an existing water main easement that crosses the East Middle School site and that will be now in conflict. The water main is not installed within that easement at this time, but that will be in conflict with, with the new ball field. So the, this item is to vacate that easement. Now, there is a second item on the agenda that you see, and it is the new proposed alignment for an easement.
So we're getting the water main out of outfield.
Out of right field. Yep, that's exactly where the old one would be.
So.
We saw the mess that happened that I've been trying when they mess with the water mains in right field.
So that is a revised resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Motion on, on the revised. Somebody gonna need this.
The revised.
That is, item, item, item seventeen is the vacation of the existing item eighteen, then is the, is the revised location.
So item seventeen just has a revised resolution. It can just be stated that it is a consideration of revised resolution number one-two-zero-seven-eight. There was a correction of the tax key on it and clarification for historical purposes for when we go back and try to track easements.
You're just trying to screw me up over here.
That's a different way of saying it, but you are right, so. Just say revised.
All right, Dukenyak move to approve revised resolution number one-two-zero-seven-eight dash zero seven one six one nine, vacating a thirty-foot water main easement by and between the Oak Creek Franklin Joint School District and the city of Oak Creek.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And item eighteen is consideration of a resolution approving a new thirty-foot water main easement by and between Franklin Oak Creek Joint School District and the city of Oak Creek. Any questions? That's the one we just vacated, we're creating a new one wherever that one now lies.
If you look at the map, it is outside of the right field boundary of the, the new ball field, so.
Okay, questions? Motion?
Dukenyak move to approve resolution number one-two-zero-seven-nine dash zero seven one six one nine, approving a thirty-foot water main easement by and between the Oak Creek Franklin Joint School District and the city of Oak Creek.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item nineteen is engineering and it's consideration of a resolution approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with the Oak Creek Franklin Joint School District for the Oak Creek High School Athletic Field Improvements and Edgewood Elementary School Building additions located at the northwest corner of South Shepherd Avenue and East Putes. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. And council, I wonder if there would be consideration, items nineteen through twenty-three. There's five of these, they are all the same motion approving stormwater management practices, maintenance agreements. And we seem to have one of these, at least one of these at every meeting lately with all of the state of the development, so. But these developments all are developing their sites such that they are creating larger impervious areas either through building, so rooftop additions and/or parking areas and, and pavements, other pavements. So all require some degree of stormwater management, mostly in the form of a drainage plan that brings the water to a detention pond and then, and then it is, then it is released at a approvable rate. So I can say that four more times, or once was probably enough. But at any rate, item nineteen is for the, yes, is for the Edgewood Elementary School Building addition and parking lot addition.
And Mike is right, the next few items, they all reference a different grade school or middle school that is being remodeled or added on to. So we'll start with nineteen. Sorry, questions?
Mayor, just one comment. Resolution number twenty-three is not part of the, the school district.
Oh, yeah, we can take the temple.
Project, so that may want to be kept separate.
Yeah.
Or twenty-two is not.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna do them all separate, but I just wanted to comment that Mike was correct in the next, all four from nineteen to twenty-two. Twenty-one.
All right, so with resolution number, on item nineteen, Dukenyak move to approve resolution number one-two-zero-seven-four dash zero seven one six one nine, approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with the Oak Creek Franklin Joint School District for their Oak Creek High School Athletic Field Improvements and Edgewood Elementary School Building addition located on the northwest corner of South Shepherd Avenue and East Putes Road.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item twenty is consideration of a resolution for the stormwater management practice maintenance agreement with the Oak Creek Franklin Joint School District. And this one is for East Middle School Athletic Fields located at ninety-three thirty South Shepherd, so.
Dukenyak move to approve resolution number one-two-zero-seven-five dash zero seven one six one nine, approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with the Oak Creek Franklin Joint School District for their East Middle School Athletic Field Updates located at ninety-three thirty South Shepherd Avenue.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item twenty-one is consideration of the resolution for that stormwater management agreement. This one is for Deerfield Elementary. Oh, Mike, you wanna give me the location? At thirty-eight seventy-one East Blue Stem.
Toman will make a motion to adopt resolution number one-two-zero-seven-six, approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with the Oak Creek Franklin School, Joint School District for their Deerfield Elementary School renovations located at thirty-eight seventy-one East Blue Stem Drive.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Item twenty-two is consideration of a resolution approving a stormwater management practice maintenance agreement with Highgate LLC for the Highgate Development located at South Thirteenth Street and West Drexel Avenue. Mike, you wanna kinda?
Sure, this is, uh, right, um, not, not a school project, this one, development at Thirteenth and Drexel. At, at this point, it is, um, a hospital and a credit union plan there, other things in the works. But they have the, the same requirement, collect their stormwater, release it at a adequate rate.
Questions? Motion?
Kirkowski make a motion to approve resolution number one-two-zero-seven-seven dash zero seven one six one nine, approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with Highgate LLC for their Highgate Development located at Thirteenth Street and West Drexel Avenue.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
And item twenty-three is consideration of a resolution approving a stormwater management practice maintenance agreement, the Seek Temple of Wisconsin Inc. for the Seek Temple Parking Lot Expansion located at seventy-five twelve South Howell. Mike?
And that, that about says it all, it is for their, the parking lot expansion, so they are putting in a second pond.
Questions? None, motion?
Kirkowski make a motion to approve resolution number one-two-zero-eight-zero dash zero seven one six one nine, approving a stormwater maintenance practices maintenance agreement with the Seek Temple of Wisconsin Inc. for their Seek Temple Parking Lot Expansion located at seven-five one-two South Howell Avenue.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Just very briefly, these last five items all had to do with stormwater management. These are things that are engineered, our, our engineering department worked very hard at it. They planned this out for the betterment of everybody involved with it, not just people that are developing, but the surrounding properties. So again, very seldom have we ever seen an engineered project that didn't improve the area around it and the management of the water. So thanks for all the hard work on that. Seems like we're going through it quick, but a lot of work does go into this, so thanks. Item twenty-four, it's consideration of a motion to concur with the recommendations of traffic and safety for various items listed A through C. Got traffic and safety, should I read them off?
I mean, I'm on, I'm on the committee.
Rich, why don't you go for it, Rich?
Sure. Committee met in June to discuss recommendations that were submitted to the committee by both members of city staff, council and constituents in our community. And the committee approved, or to send on for common council improvement, improvements at three locations. And you have the details in the common council report and then maps that kind of provide you with a better look at what was proposed and approved by the Traffic and Safety Committee. First is installation of pedestrian crossing signs and high-visibility pavement markings at Drexel Avenue and Quincy in Drexel. A lot of that discussion was brought up because of traffic that builds up at special events held at Abenshine Park and specifically the Beer Garden. So great turnouts for that, but it does cause some traffic issues and congestion. So it was the recommendation of traffic and safety to put up the, again, the pedestrian crossing signs and high-visibility pavement markings at that location. Again, I believe the speed limit there is thirty-five and anybody that drives along that road knows that thirty-five is, is never traveled there typically. It's, I, I think Matt Sullivan, our, our traffic and safety engineer, had, had done the traffic analysis and reports there and the average speed was forty-seven on that road. So some steps needed to be taken to make that a safer area, especially at those two intersections, Quincy and Clement, coming out of subdivision. So that was recommendation number one. Recommendation number two was brought up by Mike Toman and a constituent in his district about a traffic condition that existed at Fifteenth Avenue and Putes Road. If you're heading east on Putes Road, there is a slight hill or incline that you have to go up and that traffic sign doesn't, I guess, come into your field of vision until the very last moment. So we have put additional flags and signage at all four areas of that intersection, making drivers aware of the upcoming four-way stop. A traffic analysis that was done at that intersection did not indicate that there were significant accidents at that location. I believe Matt said there were two in two thousand and eighteen. But information provided to us by the police department with the number of individuals who blow through that intersection, not, either not seeing the sign or not obeying the sign, led the, the committee to make the recommendation for the additional signage, letting people know about the four-way stop at Fifteenth and Putes. And then finally.
Thanks for backing me up on that one, Rich.
Oh, no, no problem.
I wasn't able to make that meeting.
Sure.
The main problem there is I use that intersection all the time and there may not be a record of actual accidents. Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item 23 is consideration of a motion to approve the July 10, 2019, vendor summary report. Take a look?
One question.
Go ahead.
Bridget, you may not know the answer to this, Chief May, item 13 on that list, that house that was demolished, that's that longstanding vacant house that even the police had responded to on issues and stuff, that one? The one, okay, even residents of South Milwaukee are happy to see it go. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, motion?
I'll move to approve the July 10, 2019, vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $1,414,51.49.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item 23 is consideration of a motion to approve the July 10, 2019, vendor summary report. Take a look?
One question.
Go ahead.
Bridget, you may not know the answer to this, Chief May, item 13 on that list, that house that was demolished, that's that longstanding vacant house that even the police had responded to on issues and stuff, that one? The one, okay, even residents of South Milwaukee are happy to see it go. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, motion?
I'll move to approve the July 10, 2019, vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $1,419,120.62.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
And item 23 is our vendor summary report from June 26, 2019. Any questions? Please look it over and direct it to Bridget's good place to start. There are no questions, motion?
Gale, I'll move to approve the June 26, 2019, vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $619,120.62.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
And item 27 is consideration of a motion to approve the July 10, 2019, vendor summary report. Take a look?
One question.
Go ahead.
Bridget, you may not know the answer to this, Chief May, item 13 on that list, that house that was demolished, that's that longstanding vacant house that even the police had responded to on issues and stuff, that one? The one, okay, even residents of South Milwaukee are happy to see it go. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, motion?
I'll move to approve the July 10, 2019, vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $1,414,51.49.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And item 27 is consideration of a motion to approve the July 10, 2019, vendor summary report. Take a look?
One question.
Go ahead.
Bridget, you may not know the answer to this, Chief May, item 13 on that list, that house that was demolished, that's that longstanding vacant house that even the police had responded to on issues and stuff, that one? The one, okay, even residents of South Milwaukee are happy to see it go. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, motion?
I'll move to approve the July 10, 2019, vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $1,414,51.49.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And item 27 is consideration of a motion to approve the July 10, 2019, vendor summary report. Take a look?
One question.
Go ahead.
Bridget, you may not know the answer to this, Chief May, item 13 on that list, that house that was demolished, that's that longstanding vacant house that even the police had responded to on issues and stuff, that one? The one, okay, even residents of South Milwaukee are happy to see it go. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, motion?
I'll move to approve the July 10, 2019, vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $1,414,51.49.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item 27 is consideration of a motion to approve the July 10, 2019, vendor summary report. Take a look?
One question.
Go ahead.
Bridget, you may not know the answer to this, Chief May, item 13 on that list, that house that was demolished, that's that longstanding vacant house that even the police had responded to on issues and stuff, that one? The one, okay, even residents of South Milwaukee are happy to see it go. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, motion?
I'll move to approve the July 10, 2019, vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $1,414,51.49.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
And item 26 is our vendor summary report from June 26, 2019. Any questions? Please look it over and direct it to Bridget's good place to start. There are no questions, motion?
Gale, I'll move to approve the June 26, 2019, vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $619,120.62.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.